For a bit of delay, welcome to continuation of the City Waterloo Council meeting Monday, August 13th, 2018. I'll look for disclosure pecuniary interest and then general nature thereof. I see Council Freeman, Council Burke.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, I'm declaring on the closed meeting, Item C, advice subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose related to my place of employment.
Thank you, Council Burke.
Item 6G, Neighborhood Matching Fund, related to my place of employment.
Thank you. Can I look for somebody to prove some minutes, please? Council Freeman, Council V. All those in favor? That's all of us, including Council Henry, there we go. Consent motion, couple of items on there, people want to take them separately? Seeing none, someone want to move the consent items for the GRCA Cricket Field, as well as the drink water permits operator in charge appointment? Council Freeman, Council Burke. All those in favor? All of us. First up, Staff Report, Community Energy Investment Strategy Implementation Funding Request, prepared by Mr. Scott Nevin, who's here, just for questions. For questions, any questions of Scott? Seeing none, who would like to move forward on community investment strategy? Council Freeman and Council Henry would for sure. All those in favor? Okay with that, Bob?
No.
Opposed?
A principle.
Okay, one opposed, thank you. Thank you, Scott. Item B, 2018 Second Quarter Health and Safety Report, prepared by Lisa Dunlop. Any, I see Susan's here, too. Any questions on that? Someone want to move that? Council V does, Council Freeman does, all those in favor? That's all of us, thank you. And the Health and Safety Policy Statement, adding Mayor Dave to the list of signatories, too. All the questions, or if you move it? Council Maven, you look like you want to move it? Council Freeman want to move it? All those in favor? Okay, good, thank you. 2017-18 Health and Safety and Wellness Annual Report, prepared by Lisa Dunlop. Any questions on that? Seeing none. Look for mover. Council V, Council Freeman, all those in favor? Thank you. Moving along nicely, we'll be done by around four o'clock, I think, today. Item E, Second Quarter, 2018 Second Quarter Surplus Protection, prepared by Heidi Ramslayer. Oh, and here's Paul, welcome, Paul. This is just a report, no question, no, no presentation, any questions from staff, from staff, from council? Go ahead, Council Maven.
Thank you, Mayor Jaworski, and through you to Paul. There's a reference in the report to a hydro policy on dividends. Is that, just for clarification, is that Waterloo North Hydro's policy, or is that our policy and how to deal with dividends?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Council Maven, I think it's twofold. There is the shareholder policy that determines how much of their income is dispersed back to the shareholders, being ourselves and the townships. And there also is policy that the surplus to budget of the hydro automatically gets placed in the curve in CRF funds.
Just a bit of a follow-up there. It refers to 2012 is when this policy was revised. And I guess I'm just drawing a blank on it, other than the city's policies?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, I believe that the 2012 date is for the shareholder agreement that was revised at that time.
Okay, I'll follow up offline, thank you. Further questions of Paul? Seeing none, we have a report to receive as information. Council Henry moves it, seconded by Council V. Any further questions? All those in favor? All of us, thank you, Paul and team. Item F, Award of RFP 1807 Consulting Services for the Waterloo Memorial Rec Complex Expansion. Kevin Van Oudigum is here, welcome, Kevin. And there is, is this, is there a presentation, or is this just for questions and answers? Anybody have any questions? I have one. I see the same architects that built the rec center in the first place. Is that correct? Well, I see it on their website, so I presume it's correct.
Yeah, to you, Mayor Jaworski, that is correct. The Parkin Architects is the original architect for the WMRC back in 1993 when it was constructed.
Wonderful, good news. Any further questions? Seeing none, wants to move forward on a rec complex expansion? Council Whaley does, Council V does, all those in favor? It's all of us, thank you very much. And Item G, Neighborhood Matching Fund Policy, Revised Community Cash Grants Policy and Revised Terms of Reference for the Community Cash Grants Committee. Beth Renovitch, welcome, Beth.
Here today to talk to you about three things, the Community Cash Grants Policy, some minor revisions, new terms of reference for Community Grants Committee, and a new policy for the Neighborhood Matching Fund Program. Just a reminder that it has been since May that the city has had its first council-approved Neighborhood Strategy, and implementation work has started already. At first, we have focused on Action 13, which was looking at strengthening existing financial supports for neighborhoods. And this work included making some changes to our Neighborhood Matching Fund Program based on the review that was conducted as we developed the Neighborhood Strategy. So this involves making some changes in terms of process, things like making the application form easier, shifting the dates for deadlines to better align with when the community is looking for funding. And we've also developed a policy for the program to make it clear to the community what is eligible, who is eligible, what kind of programs we will fund through this grant, so that it's easier for applicants and easier for the evaluating committee as well. In terms of the new Neighborhood Matching Fund Policy, some of the key elements to the policy, we're being very clear that this program is about funding neighborhood-based projects that contribute to neighborhood community building. It's not a program about things that are for the community as a whole, it's specifically about things that are happening in neighborhoods and connecting neighbors. We also wanted to encourage new groups to apply and give them some priority. At this point, we're hoping for more applicants for the program, and so we want to incentivize people that maybe haven't applied for a grant before, not only by making it easy, but by increasing their chance of success. We also have changed the program from how it's been operating in the past by allowing food and refreshment costs to be funded through the program. And we've established a staff feasibility review process. This is not about giving staff the opportunity to say yes or no, we'll fund this or we won't fund this. This is about staff sitting down, looking at the idea the community members have proposed, and saying, what kind of things do we need to let that community group know so they can be successful? How can we make sure that this project will be safe? And how, what do we need to let them know about other approvals or permissions that they need to have? We've also indicated that we'll assign a staff member to be the primary liaison to any group that does receive a Neighborhood Matching Fund. I think this is important because while this program is run out of the Community and Neighborhood Services Unit in the Community Services Department, there are going to be projects that require other areas of the city to be involved. So something may end up having a connection in parks, someone may end up having a connection in transportation, depending, or arts and culture, depending on what they're proposing. So we need that sort of corporate-wide engagement in making sure this program is a success. We've also indicated that we'd like to have a streamlined decision-making and allocation process for this program. So when the program began, it was, it came out of our Safe and Healthy Communities Advisory Committee several years ago, and a subcommittee of that Committee of Council made the funding decisions. That committee was disbanded in 2016, but the subcommittee continued to support the Neighborhood Matching Fund. We now are recommending changes to the Terms of Reference for the existing Community Cash Grants Advisory Committee, so that going forward, we would have a new committee called the Community Grants Committee, and they would be responsible for both the Community Cash Grants Program and the Neighborhood Matching Fund Program. We actually tested this out last spring. We had a few members of the Community Cash Grants Advisory Committee volunteer to work with staff on evaluation of submissions, and it went quite well. So we think this is a successful model. We heard from the community that volunteers with city committees want to have more robust opportunities and year-round, sorry, year-round opportunities. So cash grants is really a very focused opportunity in the winter, sort of between December and early February for those volunteers, they'd like something that goes year-round. And so adding in the Neighborhood Matching Fund gives them opportunities to volunteer in the spring and the fall as well. So that means that we're better using our volunteer resources, we're giving them a more meaningful volunteer experience, we're really taking advantage of all of the expertise they bring to the table, and we're also simplifying the recruitment process. Each program will still be very distinct, so even though the same committee will be evaluating the applications, they'll be doing it under the framework of the particular policy for that grant. And they'll receive training on each. We've also revised the Community Cash Grants Policy. We revised it to reflect the name we're proposing for the new Community Grants Committee, but we've also made some changes to align both the Neighborhood Matching Fund and the Community Cash Grants Program. So one of the things we're proposing is that the committee for both programs would make, would have the authority to allocate funding in alignment with the policy, rather than making recommendations to council. So for, since its inception, through Neighborhood Matching Fund, the committee evaluating those applications has made funding decisions. Historically, through Community Cash Grants, the committee has made recommendations to council, and then council has typically approved those. We'd like to simplify the process, give the committee the authority to make those decisions. That will help to get the money into the hands of the community a little bit faster, and we'll make sure that we have alignment across the two programs, which will make it a bit easier for the committee as well. We'd also like to remove the appeal process from this program. Historically, this has been a bit confusing for members of the community who either got less funding than they may have asked for, or not gotten funding. There is a very limited pot of funding for Community Cash Grants. We always get more applications than we can fund, and so the committee has to make difficult decisions. And it's been confusing for community members who come and make an appeal when there is no more funding available. Additionally, most granting programs do not have an appeal process. For example, the Ontario Trillium Foundation does not have any appeals for its granting process, so this will be very similar to most appeal processes. Sorry, most granting processes. We would bring back a report to council after every granting cycle to let council know how the funds were allocated. If approved, the new Matching Fund Policy would come into effect for the fall round, so the next round. The revised Community Cash Grants Policy would be used for the 2019 round, which typically opens in the fall of 2018. And then the new Community Grants Committee Terms of Reference would be used for the 2019 Committees of Council Recruitment Process, which I understand from clerks will begin in September. Just while I'm up here, I just wanted to give you a quick update on some other elements of what's happening with the Neighborhood Strategy. Work is underway on a number of things in addition to the Neighborhood Matching Fund piece that we're here to talk about today. We have done quite a bit of research on a micro grants program, which was one of the recommendations from the strategy that we're hoping to have up and running in the fall. We've been developing toolkits for Neighborhood ICE rinks, for people that both operate those rinks and others that might be interested in setting one up, to make it easier for them to understand the process. And hiring for the Neighborhood Coordinated Contract Position to support the implementation of the strategy is well underway. Also have a bit of good news for council and the community. The Kitchener-Warlowe Community Foundation, who was represented on our Steering Committee for the Neighborhood Strategy, approached us about working together to bring some more funding to the community for neighborhood projects. And so we've entered into a two-year agreement with the KIWI Community Foundation for a total of $20,000 to the City of Waterloo to be used to support our Neighborhood Strategy implementation. For this coming year, 10,000, the first 10,000 we receive will go to the Community Cash Grants Program focused on the neighborhood stream. And then the additional 20, sorry, 10,000 in 2019, we haven't determined yet how we'll allocate that funding, we sort of want to see how some of our programs evolve as we make changes over the next year, but it will be focused on getting those dollars into the hands of neighborhoods to do great things that build connection. Thank you.
Wonderful news, Beth. First up is Council Whaley with a question, and Council Freeman?
Great report. This whole program has really evolved in the last while through your, through your leadership, and it's greatly appreciated. Do you have a couple of questions? The first one is around the food and, including food and refreshment. So on the, on the food side, if we gave the neighborhood group money for the food, and there's an outbreak of, I don't know, something, and people get sick, what liability might we have from the city?
Through you, Mayor. I believe what our process is now is that we have them work through the region, through public health, to make sure that they understand what the requirements are around food service. And so that's one of the things, I think, having a one-stop liaison person will help, there'll be someone to help them through all of those pieces, to make sure that they do them properly. At this point, they may be having food that we're not paying for, so if we are part of the process, we can help make sure that they're safer and going through the right channels.
Our job here is to make sure that the liability's not on the city. With respect to the refreshment side, there's a, there's a term that's really changing in the next couple of months. And I'd like to be certain that the city, the refreshments would exclude alcohol and cannabis.
Through you, Mayor, there is a statement in the policy that says no alcohol, cigarettes, cannabis, or other drugs.
Thank you. Now, my final point, Mayor, on this issue is that dropping the appeal process worries me a little bit. The decision is making by accountable people, for sure, but unelected people. And I think that citizens should always have the opportunity to appeal the decision by the city to the, to the, to the council. Sometimes it happens, and I know they're difficult meetings for us to go through, but I think it's essential that citizens who have, don't get the answer they want from staff, have the opportunity to go and appeal this decision to council. So when we're going through the process of approval tonight, I want to, I want to vote in favor of this change, but I want to make an exception on that, so if we can vote on that separately. Thank you.
Understood. Next up, Council Freeman.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. One of, one of the pieces that I really would like to see changed on the eligible projects, I don't, I, I understand where you want to encourage new applications, and you want to give priority to that, and I have no problem with that being a part of the, the process and the lens that you're using, but I don't want it to be limited to a new neighborhood project. And the reason is, is we have some established neighborhoods that do really great work, and they can't afford to do that work. And by eliminating and the funding to making it only new projects, some of the things that are highly successful that they're doing, they aren't going to be able to get matching funds for, and, and I, I want that removed. I, I, it can be a one, like, I have, I, I just, I just, that's the only thing I want removed. I have no problem with, with you prioritizing new people to the table as a part of your process, but I, I don't want to limit funding.
On the, on that commentary, yeah, Beth, could you comment on that, how we might, the thought process, and maybe how we might accomplish that, in either that way or a different way?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. So the reason that we've put that in is, given the amount of funding available to the program, if we allowed projects to be funded year after year after year, much like the Cash Grants Program, we would quickly not have funding potentially for any new programs. So what we have in the strategy suggested instead is that our established neighborhood associations looking at an overall increase in funding for those groups through their affiliation agreement with the city, so that they would receive some additional funding through that mechanism to help them run new or expanded events. They also have the opportunity through this program to still access funding for something they've done before, as long as there isn't new ideas, as the policy says, new ideas would be prioritized. And at this point, our, the number of requests are such that they would still likely be funded.
Further thoughts, Council Freeman, on what you just heard?
It, it's just that the language says that, and what I just heard was that there's ways around it. So if there's ways around it, let's just take it out, and know that you're, that you're focused on looking at other avenues for ongoing funding, and that, you know, that the intent of this fund is not to be an ongoing operating fund, but that, that, you know, there's still, that there could be, it, it's a matching fund, so they still have to come to the table with matching dollars. It's not, it's not a handout, so I, I just, it, it just gets kind of goofy when they, they have to apply and say, well, this year's program's new because it's, it's to celebrate the 150th. And next year's program's new because we're celebrating the 151st of Canada's birthday. And that's what's happening, and that's just goofy, and so I just think I'd, I'd rather just, once this kind of stuff gets in here, then it's, you know, all of a sudden, nothing gets funded because it's not new.
Through you, Mayor. That's the balance we were trying to find with that wording. So previously, the committee had looser guidelines, but they had fairly consistently declined something that had been, money had been received for before. We didn't think that was appropriate, because if we have money left, why not give it out to the community to fund projects? So this was just a way to find a balance, to say, you know what, part of this, a big part of this program is about building community capacity and through funding, and so we want to prioritize new, because the new project gets those neighbors together to do things, whereas some of our groups that have already run an event one or two times, they've already built quite a bit of community capacity around that event. So the priority from staff perspective was to build new capacity in the community, but if there's funding left, to still give it out to projects that, that warrant it.
Please, go ahead.
And I would suggest the wording be changed to "with priority given to new or one-time neighborhood projects," as opposed to "be a new or one-time," because the way this is written, it's very black and white.
Okay.
And what I'm hearing is that it's not black and white, which makes me happy, but I would like to see the language reflected.
Priority given. Priority given to new projects. Yeah. Okay. Any other council have questions? Council Henry? No?
I have a recommendation to adjust, that I, it's not a question, I have a recommendation to make when we get there.
Okay, further questions? Council Maven?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. Beth, I just want to support what Council Freeman's saying, because if you have, say, an Easter egg hunt in one community that the city funds, then you have an Easter egg hunt in another community that the city doesn't fund. There's something not right about that. And I'm bringing it down to a theoretical basis, but that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. So I think we're out of questions at this point. Council Henry?
So I'd be happy to move the motion with the following two adjustments under Recommendation Two, which is the policy relating to what we've been talking about, more specifically around the Neighborhood Matching Fund. The first one, which we haven't discussed yet, but I discussed with, with Beth in advance, is in terms, it says currently eligible projects must be focused on a particular neighborhood, not citywide. The intent is good, but sometimes neighborhoods get together. So the wording there should read, be focused on a particular neighborhood or neighborhoods, yada, yada, yada. And, and staff, I understand, are fine with that, I can think of projects where that's happened. And that wasn't meant to be discouraged, but it was a wording issue. The second piece for Council, Council Freeman and Council Maven, I would say, and that staff, you know, adjust, the eligible project should typically, you know, wording to encapsulate the conversation of council, because I don't want to word smith on the fly. I think that should, that should work for, for clerks. Because the way all the other bullets read wouldn't work if you just fixed it for one, so they got to rejig that a little bit more. So, but I, I'm happy to encapsulate the, the idea that the priority is given to, because I think that was the intent, and there's likely a way to rejig some of the language around those bullets to make that read well. So with those two, I'm happy to, to move this, recognizing, I think, for Council Whaley that under the Cash Grants Policy, which is number three, there's a separate vote on the removal of the appeal mechanism.
Okay, I think we're there.
Seconded by, Council Freeman, oh, sorry, Council V, next time. Okay, so we have it here with the, the recommendations as written, with the addition of, or the change to be neighborhoods can get together, that with a priority for new projects, and then three separately, the ability to appeal to council.
To the clerk.
And that is for the Neighborhood Matching Fund would have the ability to appeal to council, which is new. Which would be new. Is that what you're saying? Or the Cash Grants?
Through you, Mayor, just to, to be clear, Neighborhood Matching Fund has never brought recommendations to council or had an appeal process, only Cash Grants has.
So I'll go to Council Whaley. Is it to continue on for Cash Grants, or to continue to, just for Cash Grants, to continue on as is? Okay, so we'll vote on everything, including the first two neighborhoods and the priority to new. All those in favor? I think we all are, okay. And Council Whaley, do you want to speak to the appeal one again, or you're good with that?
I think I stated my case clearly enough, if people understand. Yes?
Yep. Any further discussion? So now this is just for, to, to allow Cash Grants, which currently can appeal to council, to continue to be able to appeal to council, as opposed to being like the Neighborhood Matching Fund, which does not come to council, doesn't appeal to council?
For clarity, voting yes means what, and voting no means what?
That's a good question.
Because the mayor just worded it the opposite of how I thought this was going to be, so.
Okay, to allow appeals for Community Cash Grants. Or, sorry, to continue with appeals for Community Cash Grants is in favor. That would be in favor of Council Whaley's idea. All those in favor? All is opposed? That carries. Congratulations. Okay, thank you, Beth, for all your work, and good news on the KIWI Community Foundation additional grants. Wonderful. Next up, Amendments to Traffic and Parking Bylaw Number 08077. Mr. Shane Turner with the presentation. Welcome, Shane.
Thank you, Mayor Jaworski, I'll be brief. As council knows, we currently have a process in place to deal with, to address snow events when, when extreme weather hits us. We've, we're undergoing a review of the traffic bylaw right now, and we've identified an opportunity for improvements that will also align with the processes that are currently in place in the neighboring municipalities of Kitchener and Cambridge. The objective of our proposal is to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of our snow plowing operations. The current parking prohibition during a snow event that's in place now is the same as our normal parking prohibition, which is 2:30 to 6:00 AM during the overnights. What we're proposing is to align with the, with the cities of Kitchener and Cambridge, which is the authority to impose a 24, up to a 24-hour parking ban during the, during the snow event to, to facilitate snow plowing operations. The current process, parts of the current process will remain in effect. The Director of Transportation Services will declare a snow event in the normal way that, that she does now, and that declaring a snow event is based on credible evidence that we will, that we will, or are in the midst of a snow event that will result in a minimum of eight centimeters of snow. Once the declaration is made, public notification will take place in a number of ways, including a media advisory, it'll be posted on our website, and we'll be using all of our social media accounts available at the time. The parking prohibition will take effect at midnight on that day, and will remain in place for 24 hours unless it's canceled earlier, or has to be extended due to continuation of the extreme weather. Our officers will patrol streets. Our officers will patrol streets in advance of the plows and issue tickets when necessary, and they would have the ability to tow vehicles that may be impede, totally impeding, uh, towing oper- or plowing operations. We're proposing a, a parking fine of $80, which is equal to, uh, the other cities. And I wanna stress that the focus of this, uh, of this initiative and the fine is really to act as a deterrent. Our hope would be that we would limit the number of parking tickets issued, since that means that, that, uh, the vehicles are already off the street. So the, the focus, again, of this program is to act primarily as a deterrent. We, um, we posed a question on Engage Waterloo throughout the, uh, the latter half of June and July. We posted it for, for four weeks. We had 65 responses. Of the 65 responses, 46 people indicated that they were in support of the program. 11 respondents indicated that they were not in support of the program, and the remaining eight respondents provided general comment, but didn't provide any really clear indication of whether they supported the, the program or not. So, um, the overall, 80% of the respondents, um, had indicated a, uh, general support for the program. So that's the, the biggest piece of, of this report. We have two other minor housekeeping amendments that we are proposing, just since we are in the midst of, of updating the, uh, the traffic bylaw at this time. More as a matter of convenience than anything else. We're proposing to amend the, uh, the definition of heavy truck and heavy vehicles to align with what the region, um, has done in their bylaw, knowing that, that we have regional roads that pass through our, uh, our, our city. The other amendment relates to a project that is underway and is nearing completion and will be presented to council, uh, early in the new year. And that's the system of administrative monetary penalties, which is, uh, relating to our, our parking ticket adjudication system. So this amendment will be required in the future. We're doing it as a matter of convenience now that we're opening up, or proposing to open up the, uh, the, the traffic and parking bylaw. Um, the, this particular amendment won't be utilized until the program is presented to council in early 2019, and it opposes no risk, um, to the city at this point, um, by enacting it at this point. That concludes my comments, and I'm available for questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Shane. Questions? Councilman Veth would like to move it. Seconded by Councilman Maven. All those in favor? All of us. Thank you, Shane. One item left, then we can get out of here. Okay. Um, and the goal is, for this next item in the formal public meeting, is to continue on for, until we get to around 5:15, 5:30, and then we will break. We'll see how far we get, and then come back here at, uh, 6:30 and continue on. This is a formal public meeting to consider official plan amendment 22 and the comprehensive zoning bylaw, Z1601. Any persons who want further notice of this application, including passage of any bylaw, should sign the appropriate register in the binder located on the desk at the rear of the council chambers. There is more than one, so please make sure you're signing one or both. Will the clerk please advise council of the method that was used to give notice of the meeting and the date's notice was given?
Notice was advertised in the Waterloo Chronicle on July 19th and July 26th, 2018, and mailed or emailed on July 13th, 2018, to all property owners, to public agencies, to all persons who signed in or spoke at the informal public meetings held on January 11th, 2016, April 24th, 2017, and May 7th, 2018, and to all persons who requested further notice.
Thank you. Planner Joel Cotter will now give a brief overview of the application. Welcome, Joel.
Thank you, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. This is the formal public meeting for the city's comprehensive zoning bylaw review. Um, there's two reports before council. The first report speaks to official plan amendment 22, which is an accompanying official plan amendment to essentially do mostly housekeeping amendments related to the comprehensive zoning bylaw review. And then I will also speak to the zoning bylaw review, which is outlined in a base report, as well as an addendum report that was circulated to council, um, earlier today. And that addendum report speaks to the submissions that were submitted to the city since the final draft of the bylaw in July through to, uh, Friday, August 10th. So with respect to the official plan amendment 22, I'll just quickly walk through this. Um, the intention is to correct errors, allow for effective zoning implementation, to limit the creation of legal non-conforming lands and buildings, respond to participant input. Um, it's generally primarily minor in nature, and again, intended to allow for orderly development. Just some of the highlights. Um, item two in the official plan amendment allows for zoning to recognize lawful and actual uses that exist on the property. So this is a situation where the official plan designation may not, uh, recognize an existing use that, uh, is on the property today, but the, does allow, this provision would allow the zoning bylaw to recognize that use as, uh, as legal, and therefore not creating a nonconformity. Item two allows for existing site specifics and variances, uh, granted by the Committee of Adjustment, um, to be carried forward. Item seven expands the options for applying holding provisions. Items eight and nine allow for 120-meter notice distance to be increased. So again, this is relating to public notification, allowing council to review, uh, the notification requirements set out in the, uh, in, in the planning process that we currently have, um, allowing for expanded, uh, consultation with the community. Item 20, um, downdesignates properties on Dietz Avenue South. So again, that participant input. Uh, and item 24 specifically deals with six Dietz Avenue South, which is a, a hybrid property transitioning between, uh, the low density and the medium density along Herb Street. And items 25 and 26 expand the planned function of gateways into industrial areas, so expanding either the corridor commercial or the light industrial, uh, planned functions that exist today to allow for slightly expanded range of uses to accommodate, uh, those gateways into the industrial areas. The, uh, the, the official plan is detailed in the staff report. Um, if council's got questions, we can certainly answer them, uh, moving forward. With respect to the zoning bylaw review, we're undertaking the zoning bylaw review primarily to implement, implement the official plan. It's a requirement of the Planning Act. The city passed a new official plan in 2012, and we're required by the Planning Act to bring our zoning bylaw into conformity with that official plan. We also took the opportunity to look to simplify our zoning regulations aligned with best practices, facilitate urban design objectives in the city, uh, have appropriate regard for the municipal development objectives that we have, including economic development objectives. And again, this bylaw is intended to be a principle-based citywide bylaws. Not, it's not intended to do site-specific zoning. It's looking to paint a brush broadly, citywide, based on principles, um, for properties. And ultimately, in the longer term, we will see amendments being filed to tailor zoning to specific properties. Again, just up in the, uh, in the top, uh, corner there, you can see that the existing bylaws the city has in place were arranged from the 1947 to 1961. So those bylaws are quite dated. They need to be updated. Um, and we have over a thousand site-specific amendments and growing, um, with respect to property. So those are also being reviewed, and where unnecessary, being removed. We also look to recognize kind of how we're growing within the municipality, which is a direction towards nodes and corridors and intensification. So we're moving inward and not outward. Uh, we're looking at more mixed-use developments, more complete communities, and modernizing our zoning bylaw. With respect to the project itself, we started the zoning bylaw and released a draft on June 11th, 2016. Before that, staff were working on that draft. Um, throughout the many, many iterations, we've had numerous public and stakeholder engagement sessions, intermunicipal dialogue, research and analysis undertaken by both city staff and others, coordination with station area planning, drop-in sessions, discussion papers, a range of opportunities to try and bring the zoning bylaw for the city forward for discussion and engagement. That led to a second draft in April 2017, followed by, in May 2018, a culmination of official plan amendment 22, which was under discussion. And then ultimately, a final, a release of the final bylaw in July of 2018. Now we also, based on the comments we received over the next few weeks, did do an update to try and provide some further, uh, clarity on the final draft, uh, August 1st, along with an open house to the public. So it's been almost a four-year process in the public realm for discussion, a little longer than that with staff working in behind the scenes. With respect to the policy framework, um, the policy framework is discussed in the staff report before council, but essentially, it looks, we looked at the Planning Act, Provincial Policy Statement, the Growth Plan, Regional Plan, and the City Official Plan. And again, the core objective of this zoning bylaw review is to implement the city's official plan. And we've gone through these documents, and in our opinion, the zoning bylaw that's advanced to council conforms to, or is consistent with, or has appropriate regard, as the case may be, to these various policy documents as discussed in IPPW 2018-058. With respect to, and I'll kinda walk through each of the sections of the bylaw. With respect to definitions, we've updated the definitions from the 50s and 60s, um, to be much more modern and expanded, um, both, uh, the range of existing definitions that we have in the bylaw, but also look to refine the definitions to make them more relevant and/or more clear and simple. And there's just a, a smattering of some of the, some of the definitions that we have, uh, worked on through this bylaw. With respect to general provisions, again, the section in the bylaw that contains general provisions is quite lengthy. Um, in part, that's because some of the performance requirements that were contained in the definitions have been transferred to general amendments. Um, we've also looked to add in provisions around amenity area. Um, and one of the provisions I know that has been raised as of recent with, with respect to the ability to have outdoor amenity area above 22 meters. That was provided as part of the August update, where we're allowing, we're recommending to council, up to 20% of that outdoor amenity area could be permitted above 22 meters. We've allowed for conventions and trade shows, for example, based on some comments with economic development to be used, or temporarily occupy vacant industrial buildings. So again, where we have space within the community that can accommodate certain events, we're trying to accommodate that through the zoning bylaw. We've added in, um, a broader range of permissions around public markets and temporary farmers' markets. We've included provisions for clarity around things like rounding, um, as well as the Committee of Adjustment regulations being carried forward from the previous bylaws. And that applies both to minor variances, and we did an update as well, suggesting that all the decisions of the committee under section 45-2B, um, would also be carried forward and should be carried forward. Uh, with respect to the general provisions continuing on, guest suites have, uh, been recognized as a current trend. We've deeming those dwelling units within the bylaw. We've added, um, pharmaceutical dispensary as an ancillary component within medical clinics. We've also got into quite a lengthy discussion and conversation around the use of metal containers. It's outlined in the, in the, uh, general provisions, and it does allow things like pop-up commercial, temporary sale centers, uh, mobile community centers and workshops, uh, mobile maker spaces, and some mobile, uh, business incubators. What it does not permit is habitation, so residential use of, of, uh, metal containers at this compo- or at this point in time. Uh, staff, we're not comfortable recommending that to council, suggesting if that's, uh, an issue council would like us to explore, we could certainly review that in more detail. Um, continuing on, home occupations have been expanded. Um, there's a broader range, home occupations permitted. We've also increased the number of home occupations from one to two, uh, with the exception of certain kind of more heavier use home occupations, such as health practitioners. We've allowed also for indirect sales within a home office, so you can do interba- internet-based transactions. We've tailored the parking regulations based on the nature and the number of employees within home occupations, and, uh, continues to be a maximum of 25% of the dwelling to ensure that the residential use remains the primary, uh, function on the property. Uh, continuing on, we've got, uh, a continued and expanded range of non-conforming provisions, again, with the objective to try and limit the number of legal non-conforming properties created through this bylaw. This bylaw will inevitably, inevitably create legal non-conforming, uh, properties. Um, but where we have tried to, to the extent possible, is to limit those nonconformities. We've introduced requirements around servicing. The regional official plan essentially requires development within urban areas to be on full municipal services. So we've reflected that in the bylaw, but we also recognize that there are certain communities or areas within Waterloo that are not currently on services, even though they are developed, such as the Colonial Lakers area. We've addressed those areas within the, uh, the servicing provisions of the bylaw. We've worked with the Grand River Conservation Authority to implement the floodplain, uh, policy regulations in the official plan into the zoning bylaw, along with a schedule that delineates where, uh, the floodplain, uh, floodplain, um, prefixes apply. And there's also a prefix for regulated areas, essentially for hazard, uh, slopes and steep slopes, again, identified within the official plan. Uh, so these provisions are intended around floodplanning and, and regulated areas to implement the, uh, the schedule in the official plan, but not necessarily apply to all properties regulated by the Grand River Conservation Authority. Patios have been, uh, introduced or expanded within the bylaw to recognize a range of patio uses, again, to facilitate that patio culture in the uptown. Um, spiritual uses have been, a, a, a set of general regulations have been allowed for spiritual uses, essentially, which are now permitted as complementary ancillary uses within other zones that translate back to the general provisions for the performance regulations. And there's also provisions around split zoning and dual zoning within the bylaw that, um, become more and more important as we see law consolidation and amalgamation, um, for intensification projects within the city. Second residential units are also contained in the general provisions. Um, they are permitted generally in accordance with, uh, provincial policy statement, uh, and provincial directions. Um, they're limited to singles, freehold semis, and freehold towns. And again, with a whole set of, uh, performance requirements. Coaches, coach houses, which are detached second units, are restricted in terms of where they can locate. We've limited them to certain lanes within the city with the intent that those that wanna construct a coach house on a property that does not abut a lane would require a committee of adjustment approval. And the intention there is that the, the nature of the rear yards, in terms of privacy setbacks, tree retention, grade, stormwater, servicing, emergency response, all of those elements would be better looked at on a more detailed case-by-case basis, and we believe a, a reasonable mechanism to do that would be through the committee of adjustment. Um, parking within the bylaw, the, uh, parking is generally, from a policy perspective, set to meet the requirements of the demands generated by the, the proposed land uses. We've not used an approach where we're regulating parking based on use. We're regulating it by category, so all uses within the category have the same rate that's applied. Um, rates were generally lowered through height and density. Uh, again, they are lowered through this comprehensive zoning bylaw review. The parking reductions are based on context, particularly in relation to higher-order transit and walkability and intensification areas. Again, most of the, the parking regulations are minimum standards. There are maximums that are set forth within the station areas. Um, the planning for the parking is intended to create more transit-supportive communities and reduce the reliance on the automobile, and it supports other objectives, including climate change mitigation. We've also looked, when we were drafting the regulations, at trends that are existing within the industry, including unbundling, car shares, millennials, driverless cars. Some of that technology will come, and again, the bylaw can be updated as we get greater certainty around some of those, uh, technological advancements, such as driverless cars. Uh, again, there's information provided within the staff report, and I know that's very difficult to read, but it essentially lays out, uh, the reductions that were applied, starting in kind of category A, working through category F, reductions, um, basically from 50% down to a 10% reduction, the highest, uh, reductions granted in areas in close proximity to ion stops. And again, a parking overlay has been provided as Schedule A2, A1 to the bylaw, uh, again, to, to delineate, to delineate where areas A through F exist in the community. The general parking rates are outlined, they're, they're provided here, but, you know, commercial is a good example, where we've reduced traditionally the commercial parking rates from around three to four, sometimes five per 100 square meters. Those have been reduced based on proximity, and for example, if you were in with, within area A, in proximity to an ion station, they've generally been reduced down to 1.5. If you take a typical office at the bottom, as you can see here, that would translate to about 30% of your employees being provided with parking, 70% coming by some other means, and no visitor parking being provided. So the rates have been reduced to allow for, um, greater use of transit, less reliance on the automobile. But again, there may be certain developments that will build slightly higher than this, and those who are looking at certain types of offices, for example, particularly tech offices, will pursue those lower parking rates. Restaurants, parking rates have remained status quo. We've introduced barrier-free parking rates, consistent with our Urban Design Manual, as well as bicycle parking rates, which are based off of the Urban Design Manual, but where parking rates are reduced in core areas, uh, around ion stations, uh, so the motor vehicle parking reduces, the bicycle parking goes up. Um, commuter parking lots are permitted, again, to support that park-and-ride concept within the community. The, there's certain types of parking arrangements that will, um, be advanced as developments come forward to the city, things including off-site parking. We've not dealt with those matters through this bylaw. Those are better addressed through section 40 of the Planning Act, in our opinion, which allows council to provide exemptions for parking subject to agreements. Um, and we've also introduced electrical vehicle, uh, And we've also introduced electrical vehicle parking requirements for new construction. The building code has been modified in many cases to require electrical vehicle stations and conduit to be installed. We've taken that, and where the building code necessarily hasn't addressed it, we've expanded that into the zoning bylaw, again to continue those objectives around climate mitigation and accommodating these uses, but also based on public feedback that we've received where we've seen some interest in expanding existing developments to accommodate more electric vehicle charging stations. With respect to built form, we did review the height and density provisions within the official plan. Again, we've looked at intensification, transit-supportive considerations, height transitioning, podiums and tower massing, step backs, tower separations, tower dimensions, and densities. And the picture that's shown here are the two western towers of the Barrel Yards project. Again, Policy 3.4.3 of the official plan, section 3.4 sets out the maximum requirements for height and density within certain properties. This policy allows council, based on context, to reduce those heights and densities. So we did look at a number of factors, and this is all outlined in a broad sense in the staff report for council, but it does look at the urban growth centers, the area where we're going to see the highest densities or intend to have the highest densities in the urban growth center. We also recognize that it's fairly narrow, fairly compact grid configuration. Nodes and corridors are surrounded by low-density housing, so there's a desire and a need for transitioning. The policy direction from the province on down is to efficiently use land, so it's generally directed towards intensification, and that was a consideration in our review. Also, looking at how height and density impact people and how they feel, and with an objective of trying to avoid negative impacts with respect to tall buildings, particular things like the canyon effect and comfortable public realms and facilitating more human-scale development. So we also looked at the urban design manual, which provides guidance with respect to built form and massing. And again, it's designed and massed buildings to transition. They should step down towards lower buildings, mass buildings to their surroundings, achieve interest in a coordinated skyline, emphasize the base and podium sections of buildings, and use facade step backs between the base and the tower. Just some of the directions that are contained in the UDM. And this was, again, part of the basis that assisted staff in providing the recommendations before council. Again, it was all based on context-sensitive height regulations. We did look to articulate facades and massing, and we also completed a review of other municipalities. And where we arrived at is tower, a tower step back of three meters, which would about a street-line building facade. So any facade that faces a street would require a step back of three meters, minimum three meters. A tower separation of 11 meters to an interior lot line, with the exception of lands that about a park, and 22 meters between towers. Tower separations for interior lots could be reduced to six meters on one side, provided both side or setbacks to the towers equal 22 meters, again to allow some movement in play in the architecture. A tower footprint of 1,000 square meters, horizontal tower dimension of 40 meters. So in context, based on the review that we did in other municipalities, generally the requirements were for about a 25-meter tower separation. Three-meter step backs were fairly consistent. The tower footprint in some municipalities is down to 750 square meters, and a horizontal tower dimension of 35 meters. And those dimensions that I just mentioned are more consistent with the Northdale neighborhood that exists today. The dimensions advanced through the zoning bylaw provide slightly more relief. And again, it's based on context. We looked at many of the existing developments and buildings within the community and found that if we applied, for example, a 750-square-meter tower footprint, that would only allow for a select number of existing projects to move forward. We moved to the 1,000 square meters. It allows a much broader range of units and projects to move forward within the existing, or similar to the existing built fabric within the community. And the challenge, one of the challenges will be with respect to tower separations. We recognize that. Again, this is a principle-based, city-wide bylaw. There may be contexts where, in certain instances, applications can be made to adjust those tower separation requirements, for example, to potentially reduce it to an interior lot line where the context is deemed appropriate. With respect to station areas, again, we've done our best to align the new zoning bylaw with station areas to implement stationary planning that's been undertaken by the Growth Management Division. Again, there's been, through that process, some changes in planned function to a number of properties. So properties that were previously designated or intended one way have been modified through height and density, or through stationary planning, I should say, to a different planned function, and those have been reflected in the new zoning bylaw. We've introduced through the zoning a common outdoor area requirement, which is a supplement of kind of the landscaped open space provisions, and again, intended to build that public realm within the station areas. Parking maximums are imposed, again, to limit the nature of the developments to be less auto-oriented. And certain exemptions have been added to the bylaws before council to address existing conditions and the minor expansion of existing conditions up to 10% of the existing building floor area. So if you've got an existing project today, anticipating that will be redeveloped in the future, but you need some minor modifications, we've tried to address that within the updated station area zones. Quickly through the residential, again, not much has changed with respect to residential. We've reflected the nature and the designations within the official plan using the existing, or with a range of zoning categories. We've also introduced a residential conservation, RC1 zone, for the McGregor-Albert Heritage District. And again, we continue forward the Northdale zone, but we've broken that in from one zone into three for easier implementation. Commercial zones, again, have been drafted to reflect the official plan and the categories within the official plan. We've refined the range of permitted uses. We've allowed more mixed uses within nodes and corridors. Again, the uptown continues to be the focus of the commercial center for the community. Retail stores are more broadly permitted. We've also added a range of other uses, such as nano breweries and personal brewing establishments, again, to kind of create those cultural opportunities and connections within the community. And for some uses, such as nightclubs and payday loan stores, we have provided certain restrictions in terms of both location and in some cases, minimum distance requirements. And again, there's a strong emphasis on tech office within the commercial zones to support the expansion of a full range of technology offices in the commercial areas. With respect to employment, again, we continue on with the theme that's set out in the official plan, mirroring that with business employment, flexible industrial, which is your heavier industrial, as well as your academic, which is the university and colleges. The uses have, again, been refined. These areas are where advanced tech and tech office are both permitted. We've expanded the range of food and beverage manufacturing. We've also added in a provision around light manufacturing, assembling, and processing to try and maintain land-use compatibility near sensitive uses. Expanded permissions for craft breweries, microbrewery permissions. Introduced uses such as maker space to allow more creativity and studio-type space for the community. And we've updated the university and college zoning to better reflect kind of existing conditions and, again, reduce some of the parking requirements, given the decent access to higher-order transit, in particular ION for Laurier and UW. Again, the advanced tech uses have been kind of prominent within these employment areas, looking also to permit a range of ancillary types of display and retailing of those advanced tech products and system prototypes within each of the employment categories. Other zones within the bylaw, there's a number of institutional zones. The school zone has been crafted specifically tailored to schools. Given that we're basically reaching our limits, we have one school that's intended, new school, to be built in the community in Beaver Creek Meadows. We know generally from district planning where that school will go. So again, there's greater flexibility for the city to tailor a specific zone in category for schools. We've also used that category to expand the range of ancillary uses to try and create or foster the use of schools as hub spaces and allow for them to expand and be developed and used as hubs within or for the surrounding community. The parks and open space regulations have been mirrored off of the official plan designations. And again, there's a general park category, conservation category for woodlands and wetlands, a golf course category, as well as tailored categories for the environmentally sensitive landscape in the northwest corner of the city. And we have a number of specialty zones that have been added as well. The waste management zone, the future determination zone, which is effectively landzone agricultural today that we anticipate development coming forward on, but we don't have enough information to draw definitive zoning lines for those properties. And then the zone change category has been more recently added to reflect properties that have current active development applications, zoning applications before the city, and allowing the zoning that exists on the day before the day of the passing of this bylaw to carry forward. And the zoning, through those zoning processes, the ultimate zoning for the properties will be determined. That generally concludes my presentation. The staff report, as indicated, provides a synopsis of the bylaw, to the extent that we could provide a synopsis. The addendum report is intended to respond to the items that have been expressed to council prior to August 10th, submitted since the final draft. Those items have been identified, kind of summarized, some staff commentary provided, as well as recommendations for council to assist council in deliberating or reviewing each of those submissions, and I understand there's more submissions that are coming through. And again, just before I conclude, I want to recognize that this has been a truly corporately-team effort. There's been individuals from a wide range of divisions and departments within this city that have worked on this bylaw. We've certainly worked closely with building standards and engineering services, transportation services, municipal enforcement, the CAO's office, in particular economic development with committees of council. A wide range of divisions and individuals have played a part in this bylaw. We appreciate all their help along the way. Be happy to try and answer any of council's questions that they may have.
Wonderful. Thank you, Joel, and thanks for all your effort in the past hours and days. And I note our head of economic development is here, Justin McFadden. I think you were going to offer some words as well.
Sure. So first off, I just wanted to quickly thank Joel and his team for the tremendous amount of work that's gone into this. I think we all know that it's been almost three years that they've been working at this, and it's not been an easy task. There's trying to keep a lot of different constituents happy, moving this forward. It's not easy, but I think certainly with the current version that we're looking at today, they've really found that balance. So I think tremendous kudos to Joel and the team for getting us this far. From the economic development side of things, we've been providing, as Joel mentioned, feedback all the way through the process and have really, I've really seen a lot of enhancements in the third version of this that we're looking at that really promote economic development. So some of the key things that we have seen in this version that I think are moving things in a very positive direction. I think we've seen a reinstatement of height and density along King Street, Caroline Street, library site in uptown, and some others. There's been some site-specific zoning for the Ark and Carnegie Library, which are very positive for those sites and the development there. There's introduction of transition regulations, facilitate plan investments, so existing projects can move forward in a positive manner. We've seen more transit-supportive parking reductions in the uptown in version three, and certainly have seen more readily recognized specific employment uses at individual sites with employment uses generally expanded over previous versions. So a lot of really positive direction that we've seen on this. And I think, I think the one thing is that, you know, this is, it's not going to be perfect, but I think what we can do going forward is take a look at, you know, what things have been implemented, and over time, you know, evaluate those and perhaps make changes in the future as we go forward. So I think that that's one thing that we can all keep in mind as we move through the process here.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. McFadden. Okay, first up is Councilor Henry, then get in line. Councilor, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Joel, and as you mentioned, team for the work that you've provided. I noted at the outset that you've been updating and modernizing bylaws that the oldest one dates to a time before my parents were alive. So certainly, this is an exercise whose time has come. It was me trying to point out the bylaws were old, not any individual was old in dealing with that. So I'd sent you, Joel, a number of issues that I'd identified through the submissions. You've addressed almost all of them in your addendum, so I appreciate that. But there were a few that were left outstanding I wanted to ask you about. And then I think one other is that I've seen come in the last couple of hours that I've reviewed and have a note for you as well. So first, I wanted to note that in some of the site-specific areas that you've recommended, you know, subject to your agreement on wording, updating various exemptions to recognize approved site plans and things on the ground as they were existing. I wanted to confirm with you that wording that would be satisfactory to you about removing sort of the new amenity requirements, the new tower separation requirements, would not lessen the requirements that existed under the existing site plans or exist on the ground today. We wouldn't get less for giving you that flexibility. We'd get at least what we've got today.
Through Mayor Jaworski to Councilor Henry. Certainly, part of the language that we've used in the addendum report is to wording that's satisfactory to both myself as director of planning approvals, as well as the city solicitor in terms of tailoring wording appropriately under law. But the intention certainly is where requests have been advanced on tailored and specifically designed projects that have gone through a comprehensive planning process. Certainly, we don't want to necessarily institute regulations that would put those projects either in jeopardy of building out final stages. But certainly through those processes where there was commitments to provide amenity space or landscape, open space, the intention would be is to carry those requirements through and allow the developments to be constructed as originally approved. So that's the intention behind those statements in the addendum report.
I appreciate that. In terms of the new requirements around common outdoor area, I'm not going to, you know, get into the broad strokes of why. I think Stafford did a good job of identifying, you know, their opinion on that matter, and I'll leave that there. But there was one comment, I think it was one of MHBC's letters that raised that in the U116 zone, that is those traditional core areas of King Street where there is zero line setback, that it may be difficult to provide the common outdoor area in a frontage or flankage yard, since there is no frontage or flankage yard, and then accessing them is difficult. I was wondering if that was something that Stafford agrees is worth, you know, considering as they go to draft a final bylaw in removing those requirements, or if there's reasons that Stafford wants to advance for why those should continue in the bylaws drafted.
Through your Mayor Jaworski to Councilor Henry. The common outdoor area requirement was generated through the stationary planning work that was undertaken, you know, in terms of its genesis. The stationary planning work did not include the uptown, but one of the directions that we ultimately received kind of earlier, in earlier iterations of the bylaw was that general policy frameworks that were applied to other stations should not be forgotten with respect to the uptown. So in the final version, we did translate that regulation to, from the other stations into the uptown. But it is a fair comment. The U116 zone is effectively the main street area or certain areas of the core where there are limited setbacks, buildings can be built essentially to the lot line. And that regulation would, in theory, create an unintended consequence of, you know, disrupting the street edge and whatnot. So that is a fair comment. I think that's something we can take away.
Okay, thank you. A couple more. One of the items I noted in general, I'm not sure if there was any specific piece of correspondence that raised it for me, but in terms of balcony encroachments, that the edge of the building was determined to be the edge of the balcony for the purpose of defining sort of those separations and that podium and form. So I certainly get where, I won't make that comment since that's a comment. Above the podium, is it, two-part question, above the podium, is it safe to assume that those balconies can encroach into any tower setback above the podium? Or is there a separate matter, that, a separate regulation that would cause that to be the line as well of the building?
Through your Mayor Jaworski to Councilor Henry. The intention, as drafted, was to be clear that the separation was between the buildings, including the balconies. So again, when we did best practice reviews to see what was out there, the general separation was more in the order of 25 meters. We've reduced that into the 22-meter range to allow, in some cases, balconies or a little tighter configuration. The challenge is, is that once you start to add in balconies and narrow these spaces between buildings, you start to create that undesired canyon effect, and that becomes the offset where we're trying to balance the regulations, and in certain cases, it may be appropriate, like I said, based on context, to reduce some of those requirements or adjust some of those regulations. But it's really, again, a principle-based intention to try and manage that separation between buildings, allow for more narrower built form in the tower section of the building. But if you start to allow balconies to encroach, then you're going to narrow that space between the buildings, and there may be unintended consequences.
Okay. That's how I read it, but I just wanted to make sure that that was the intention. Okay, that's how I read it, but I just wanted to make sure that that was the intention of staff. So you spoke about that in the tower portion, but when I read the regulations, am I to read them that the podium, that a podium for a larger building, that the edge of that building is the edge of the balcony, or are balconies still able to sort of intrude in the podium section, since that's not a tower separation issue?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Henry. It's a good question. The general requirements would be that the balcony forms part of the building and therefore is subject to the setback, but there are architectural projection permissions within the base of the bylaw that do allow certain projections, including balconies, to extend into some of those side yards. So there's a balance there. I'd have to, again, look at the details of the wording to give you a definitive response.
Yeah, I think that may be helpful as you get towards, you know, September on clarifying that. So I appreciate those three. One more site-specific, and then one more other comment to raise. Submission received, I think, this afternoon arising from the 500 King property for Manulife, and the difference in terms of the low-rise residential setback being set at 81 meters rather than the half the height of the building or seven and a half, whichever is greater. I was wondering if staff could identify the reason for the difference on that large site, because it is site-specific and is different than other places in the city.
Yeah, through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Henry. I can't recall the specifics of it, but the intention was to try and allow the majority of the site to be developed up to that 81-meter height limit to allow for the expansion of the property, but recognizing that it does back on to low-rise residential housing. So generally, the principle that's been applied is that low-rise residential housing should abut structures no higher than that six-story framework. So the back part of the property closest to the residential was limited to 20 meters to, again, kind of frame out a six-story built form, and then tiers up all the way to the 81 without getting into the half the height of the setback, which may, again, provide some restrictions. So that's my recollection. I can't recall the exact details, but that was the basis of the regulation being advanced.
That certainly sounds like a response to the question that was contained in some material. And the last general one I have, and then I think I may have one other, you know, more generic comment on this. First, Joel, I appreciate the very lengthy parking appendix. I think that goes a long way towards helping us understand, and hopefully the public understand, staff's rationale for the various parking reductions and staff's understanding of the general trends in parking. There are some trends that are ups and trends that are down, some that are sideways. That was a very interesting, interesting read. But the one comment that you made in your report, and I noted in economic development submission this afternoon, they're wondering about is the potential for exploring shared parking between mixed uses. Staff have ruled this out at this stage. I didn't see a lengthy commentary on that. I was wondering if you could, you know, articulate why shared parking isn't something that staff are proposing to advance at this time. I know it was something that we saw some very specific tables of in the stationary planning, official plan amendment.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Henry. We could talk about parking for eight days, I think. Shared parking certainly has been a topic of discussion. Ultimately, the approach that we took, again, to simplify the bylaw, was to build in, as part of the reductions that were applied, the knowledge that some of those sites, particularly the closer you got to stations, would have naturally shared parking going on with them. So the reductions indirectly include the shared parking as one of the components that support the reductions that were advanced by staff. The reason we didn't get into specific shared parking is through the first draft of the bylaw, we actually got into this in great detail, and it's extremely complicated. Some municipal bylaws, you'd need a PhD to figure out how they actually work. So our approach was, we didn't really want to go down that road, and the other challenge that we've been finding is through the condominiumization of some of these buildings, you know, when you've got a parking spaces that is shared in theory, we typically reassign it either as a commercial, as part of a commercial tenant or to a residential tenant, and we were running into some issues on some of the properties where shared parking is permitted today, for example, in the Commercial Two Zone, where we've run into this issue doing condominiums. So again, to avoid those types of issues, we took the approach of recognizing that shared parking will naturally happen, applying reductions to lower parking rates, to fairly low requirements, and without getting into the specifics of calculations or models for shared parking. It's the approach, again, to try and simplify it for everybody moving forward. We recognize shared parking will happen for sure. But again, part of the commentary is indicated, there's a lengthy piece of parking text in the back of the staff report, and the purpose of that was, again, to advise council of the nature of parking today in the community, which, you know, as I indicated in my presentation, the rates we're suggesting in the core would provide roughly 30% of employees with parking and no visitor. Right now, the ratio is more in around the 85% of people coming by vehicle. So it's a very much of a shift in terms of how we've parked necessarily in the past. But again, part of that rate that we've advanced includes a shared parking component built into the rationale as to why we can justify going as low as we have.
And one last question, then I'll turn it back over to the rest of, to Mayor for council. This perhaps should have been my first question, as it's more of a high-level, you know, assessment of this. And Joel, I think you briefly spoke to this at the beginning of your remarks, but just wanted to confirm, the intention of the comprehensive zoning bylaw is not to deal with every single site, in every single context, in every single way, in a way that this is the bylaw to end all bylaws. It's coming down from the mountaintop, it's written in stone, it can't change, nobody should ever expect to see a zone change application ever again. That's not the intention of staff here. Can you sort of articulate again, sort of how you would see, you know, planning on a site-specific basis work in the city after council adopts a comprehensive zoning bylaw that ultimately comes into force? I think that might be helpful for members of the public to gain an expectation on the future after council considers a comprehensive bylaw.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Henry. Good question. Certainly, the bylaw is drafted as a principle-based, citywide bylaw. It is not intended to deal with zoning on individual properties necessarily, notwithstanding that we've carried site-specific zoning that has been crafted for specific projects forward in this bylaw, but it is not intended to deal with every scenario, every lot configuration. It would be impossible for us to necessarily do that. It's a principle-based bylaw, it's looking to drive at certain principles within the community, and it's certainly expected that based on consolidations or constraints that exist within properties, applications will be made. In some cases, hopefully those can be done through variances and not through zoning amendments before council, but ultimately it'll depend on the nature of what's ultimately being proposed and the scale of what's being, or the scale of the relief that's being requested. Moving forward, in the staff report, the addendum report to council, we have included a recommendation that all land zone FD would be exempted or waived from the two-year moratorium provision. So that is the fourth recommendation within the addendum staff report before council. Other properties would still be subject to that moratorium, but the way the Planning Act is structured is that council can exempt, should they choose to, projects to move forward. So again, our intention is, is that if someone wants to amend the bylaw moving forward, we would certainly consider that. We believe at a staff level, you know, we're very reasonable in terms of reviewing these things, we would present that in front of council to ultimately, you know, get direction as to how to move forward. But equally, we've been very busy doing lots of development applications. We have four more coming September 10th, in conjunction with these big projects like this. Part of our next steps, I think, will be to try and craft a mandate for council that can provide some direction and maybe, again, provide some certainty to the industry as to how applications would potentially be assessed in terms of relief moving forward. We've looked around to try and find some best practices, and we were hoping to do that for this review, but we have not successfully found good references to date. But it is on our to-do list, if you will.
And certainly not just certainty for industry, but certainty for the public writ large, all property owners and everyone else living in the city. Thank you very much, Joel.
Next on my list have Councilor Whaley, then Councilor Maven.
So your mantra throughout these almost four years is simplify and modernize, and with a 57-year-old document, it showed up with meaning a lot of change for the community, that's for sure, a lot of change. Is a moratorium meant to give us all a chance to live with the new document, live with the new regime for a couple of years, catch our breath, evaluate, and then put a review regime in place?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Whaley. I believe the intention of the moratorium is, and as often talked about in this chambers, you know, the first objective should be for a development to comply with the requirements of the city. And then where warranted or where it's in the public interest, move to seek relief off of existing regulations that we may have based on context or constraints. But the first objective would be to move towards the bylaw, and I think the intention is, is that where municipalities go and go through tremendous effort to update their official plans and update their implementing mechanisms such as zoning bylaws, the intention is, is that that principle be respected by the general development industry. Again, it's not to say that there are lots of configurations of properties and lots of constraints in the city of Wardoo, including high groundwater tables, site remediation, flood planes, there's lots of challenges when it comes to development. Council sees those day in, day out when we bring applications forward, and, you know, there still may be the need to do some amendments, but I think that's the origin of why that regulation or that provision in the Planning Act has been established.
For the last few years, really the last many years, almost every application that came forward was seeking relief, often multiple relief, from our zoning bylaw. Do we, do you expect that going forward from this point, we will have less of these applications looking for multiple relief points in the zoning?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Whaley. It would be my hope that we do. Again, we've broadened the range of uses, in many cases, reduced setbacks, reduced parking regulations, tried to certainly align the zoning bylaw with the official plan, which provides broader permissions for land uses, and we know there are a number of individuals waiting for this bylaw to be passed so deals can be executed and projects constructed. So hopefully, from that perspective, we've created some, you know, a broader range of permissions. Certainly, we've added in regulations that may create some challenges in terms of the tower stepbacks, but again, that's driven more from the city trying to meet its urban design objectives and its other planning objectives, and using the tools that are available to the city to try and provide that guidance to the development industry and set the expectation, if you will. But certainly, we will still see development applications. I would compare it to the heightened density policy work that was done in the mid-2000s. Again, a large comprehensive review, extensive public input, created new zones with reduced regulations and directed permissions to try and foster intensification, and certainly that was successful. But those regulations that were adopted, we still see requests coming through based on site-specific considerations. So this will not eliminate site-specific requests, and again, there may be merits for adjustments to the bylaw based on context. So there's lots of, lots of planning discussions still to come, but certainly this will set a guide, and in many instances, hopefully will provide fewer requests for relief than maybe we've seen in the past.
Next up, Councilor Maven, then Freeman and Burke.
And thank you, Mayor Jaworski. Joel, I've got about a dozen questions, but there's three I'd like to have answered now. I'll come back to you after I hear the delegations on the other ones, if that's okay?
Sure.
This is a consolidation, I'm just going to rehash what you've already told us. So this is a consolidation of all the previous and existing zoning bylaws?
Correct.
Okay, there's no zone changes, no new zone changes, other than the two that you've noted in the map as being in process, that are part of this bylaw, then?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Maven. There are, I'm not sure the total number, I would say there's likely about 10 active zoning applications in the city. They would be shown at Schedule A as active zoning files before the municipality, so there are a number of them. I referenced a few earlier, but there's certainly more than that that exists within the community.
Yeah, I should have said two in my ward.
Fair enough.
And as far as variances, now you talked about setbacks and changes there, but are there variances being granted as part of this bylaw that we would be approving?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Maven. No, there are not variances that are being granted. What is before council is a bylaw that does in many instances, though, reduce certain performance regulations and create and remove conflicts where they've previously existed. You know, through the non-conforming provisions that I spoke to in my presentation, you know, they, for example, now recognize a lot of the lot frontage deficiencies that exist within the Uptown, so everybody that wanted to rebuild their porch had to come to the Committee of Adjustment to get lot relief for a frontage that exists and has nothing to do with the porch. We've tried to clean up all of those types of issues that were cross-connected with the Committee of Adjustment to reduce the number of variances, but I would say the relief or the adjustments to zoning aren't necessarily, I wouldn't describe them as variances, they're more reductions in many instances. Along with, as I said, we've added components to this bylaw in terms of the tower dimensions and separation requirements, we've added in requirements for things like amenity space as well to contribute towards better built environments and better buildings, in our view. So we've tried to be thoughtful in our regulations, but in many cases, we've expanded uses, reduced regulations, certainly reduced parking regulations, but there are some additional regulations that are added as well.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the Uptown and the Uptown Form, which I think a couple meetings ago I was told, it's, the four stories on the Uptown area is still part of the zoning bylaw? It's not called four stories or two stories, whatever the standard is?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Maven. The main street policies that are set forth in the official plan, which essentially state that within 30 meters of King Street between William and Young, the maximum building height shall be 16 meters, that provision is carried forward in the Uptown One Zone category. So that is maintained as a policy direction. Those that would seek relief would have to file applications to the city to adjust those regulations.
Okay, I'll talk to you later, then, Joel, thank.
Thank you, Councilor Maven. Councilor Freeman, Councilor Burke.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. So I just, I know that Councilor Henry started asking questions around this, and I'm not sure if I totally understood the answer. So we received a lot of letters that dealt with zoning applications that have been heard approved by this council and/or heard approved vis-à-vis the Ontario Municipal Board or the tribunal. So a lot of the comments we received related more broadly to requesting that the documents provided in Appendix C1 be specific to say that an approved application would be exempt from the podium separations and the new amenity area requirements. And I'm trying to get an understanding whether or not, more broadly, that will happen.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Freeman. Certainly, based on the submissions that were presented to us before August 10th, we did look at those, and the direction, as I indicated earlier, is we would not object to those sites that have gone through extensive planning processes, tailored their developments, maybe partially constructed. Certainly, the intention of this bylaw was not to prevent those buildings and the completion of those projects. The tower separation requirements in the bylaw are crafted in such a way that they only apply to buildings constructed after the effective date of the bylaw. So the intention wasn't to go back, and if you've got an existing building, it wouldn't affect those existing buildings. But we do recognize that there's projects like the barrel yards or the J.D. Group project where additional buildings will come. Those have gone through comprehensive exercises, and we've worked very closely with the planning consultants to craft or move the existing site-specific zoning into the new framework. A lot of the requests that I see coming forward are, again, you know, what if we miss something? Let's make sure that that regulation doesn't apply. And again, certainly, the intention is, is to see those projects move forward as previously approved by, you know, this council or a previous council, as they were originally adopted before council. So, you know, the intention, again, the wording that we used, I think, in the addendum was to word satisfactory to the director, again, so we can look at some of those requirements. I know some of the requests that came through were for projects requesting exemptions from the tower stepbacks, where council actually applied a tower stepback to a project that may not satisfy the required. So again, to that issue is the previous approvals that council granted would continue forward, and if they conflict with the new bylaw, we would certainly remove those conflicts.
That's helpful. With regard to the locations where we have RMU zoning, we are lauded to RMU zoning, and you and I spoke about this the other week. I'm hopeful that staff could go back between now and I'm hopeful that staff could go back between now and September and, and have a look at those setbacks. In particular, because we count the edge of a building being, say you have underground parking, we would count the edge of that parking garage as a required setback. But it could be that the, the building separation actually meets the intent of the bylaws. So you've got five meters because you have, you have some landscaping or something of that grade. I just, I'm very concerned more broadly about the properties on King Street that reside north of university where it's RMU to RMU, not things that are already covered in the Northland, because you've already looked at that district with a different lens. And so I just, I was hoping that you can just look at those, those setbacks. It just, I, between, between the, a requirement of five meters on both sides of those properties plus podium setbacks, I'm trying to understand how the vision for that area can be achieved, quite, quite simply. So I'd like it if you could look at that.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. We will note that and report back on that request as part of the September 10 submission.
And I really like the language that you've included around the, the future development in the new, in the new recommendation that you have. Do you need specific direction today to craft a policy around how a zone change application could come to this council during that two-year moratorium? Or is just discussion around that point enough for staff to say that they'll, they'll create some kind of a policy document around that?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Freeman. I think just the general direction for staff to initiate that work is what we would need to date. We can certainly, through another venue, another council night, bring that discussion forward to council to get some further direction.
Okay. I think most of my other questions were asked by the previous members of council, but I did want to point out that I see that you've clarified that Class A bike parking means secure. And so I just wanted to say that I saw that change and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Burke, please.
I want to go back to a question that Counselor Whaley had, because it's, it's a question that I had as well, that it would seem to me that part of the point of, of doing this review is to, is to create efficiencies, to create those unicorn moments where someone decides to build a building on a place and not ask for a bylaw exemption. And we want to create more of those because it's just simply more efficient. But then there's a problem, I think, and that's when somebody does actually do that, and God bless them that they do, they make an application where they're not asking for any exemption, there's no real opportunity to explain to the public, explain to the neighbors what's coming. And that, I realize it might just be a prurient interest that people have as they drive by a lot that's been empty for 20 years, and then all of a sudden they see something being built. But I think we've all had that feeling at one point or another. And if they're asking for a bylaw exemption, well, of course, there has to be some notification. I'd still like to see more than 120 meters, but... So I'm just wondering if there's something we can do for those situations that we hope there will be more of, where there aren't going to be any, any, any asks for changes, so that we can kind of inform people in the area, here's what's coming. Just because I think people naturally feel that ownership of that little piece of land in some odd way. I don't know if there is a way to do that, but it's, it seems to me that it's something that I, that as a good neighbor, I'd like anybody who's developing that piece of land to be able to do and to step up and do that. But I just wonder if there's, there's something in there as we go down this road where hopefully we're getting more of those.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Burke. Certainly through the planning process, our objective is to engage the public and get as much information and keep individuals as informed as possible. Certainly there are mechanisms within the Planning Act, just Site Plan Control, which are not public processes. But my response to your, to your statement, if you will, is that kind of the first step that we're moving forward through is this Official Plan Amendment 22 to allow council to increase notification distance. You will see as part of planning approvals, business plan coming forward, one of the things that we want to work on, and hopefully council will support us on that, is exactly these types of things. How do we get better information to the public? How do we make our advertisements and other requirements still compliant with the Planning Act but legible to read? How do we reach more people? All of those things that you just spoke about, and Communications and Planning have been talking about that. We're talking about it certainly through the webpage refresh, and it's a big topic. You know, how do we get people out interested and engaged in getting valued input? I know through this process, it's been many years in the making, and we've had some great input from lots of citizens, stakeholders, committees, consultants. You know, we've valued all of those conversations and inputs. We don't necessarily always agree, but there's been some great feedback. And you'll see through the addendum work that we did, for example, in the August update where, you know, a number of the feedback comments that were provided by the industry, we took to HERC. We've, we've made some amendments to this bylaw, and these, these documents are living, living documents. They will be amended from time to time, and certainly we will try and do that. But the objective, moving forward for planning approvals, kind of one of the things we want to move up our, our to-do lists, is to work on that communications piece and build that into as one of our tasks for our next business plan around here.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions. Please have a seat, Joel. I will now ask any registered delegations to come forward. And first up is Mr. Glenn Shields, GSP group.
Welcome, Glenn. And to all the planners who are here, we've certainly thanked our planners and our staff for all the work. And we also thank you for all your input that you've given us over the past years, months, and even hours. So thank everyone for, for that, coming together today to get this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. And really, it has been up to the last minute. I'm here to speak on a couple of specific matters, but maybe before I start the specifics, I'll just talk about a couple of more general issues. And I think that'll provide some context to the specific application that I'm going to speak to. I'm just back from vacation, so I apologize for not having a presentation, formal presentation up on the screen, because I think some of the principles I want to talk about are probably better illustrated with graphics, but unfortunately, that just didn't happen today. I was getting caught up on all of Joel's recent reports that were coming through my email for the last couple of days. But certainly to pick up on a, on a, you know, some of the comments that counselors made and Counselor Whaley, it's certainly going to be nice to have a brand-new contemporary zoning bylaw. I hadn't appreciated how old parts of the current bylaws are, and that explains, you know, a lot of the times why we were here and why counselors were asking questions about why such a long list of elements where we're looking for amendments for. It was, it was an old bylaw. It had been updated in pieces over time, but at the end of the day, it was still an old bylaw. So having a new contemporary bylaw is, is certainly going to be a, a good thing for everybody going forward. And certainly on behalf of the planners in our office, we certainly appreciate the effort that Joel and his colleagues have put into this exercise, and especially over the course of, I guess, the more of the past couple of months, past couple of weeks, past couple of days, dealing with a lot of the more site-specific elements so that we could, in many cases, come up with zoning that addresses existing situations, trying to avoid non-conforming uses, those kind of things, which are, are really important moving forward. So we've got, I think, a good context to move forward. The primary thing I want to speak about today is, is some of the new regulations around the high-density built form in urban design. And that's certainly, you know, the basis for a lot of the applications that are now coming forward to council and have been coming forward for the past few years as we intensify, as we deal with the reurbanization and the coming of a, of a rapid transit system and all those kind of things. So there's a lot of regulations now around towers, and in general, I would say that the tower regulations, I think, are, are too prescriptive, and they'd be better handled through good urban design guidelines and a really good site plan approval process. When we're dealing with these kind of design matters, they're really qualitative matters as well as quantitative matters. But by codifying them, especially all of the building dimensions in the zoning bylaw, they really do become absolute and they do become prescriptive, and a one-size-fits-all kind of solution. And, and, you know, cities aren't really made that way. They're, they're more organic, they're more context-driven. And through that application of a good set of guidelines, I think we can deal with the principles, because it's, it's not the principles necessarily we're in disagreement with, it's the regulations and, and the numbers, if you will, that become the big driver going One of the fundamental issues, I think, is, is the definition of a, of a tower. As now drafted, and Joel, I hope I'm up to date on the latest draft that came through, but as now drafted, we have a podium as being basically a building up to six stories in height. And then everything above six is considered a tower. Now, towers generally, in my parlance, are, are more buildings in the order of 10 to 12 stories and greater. Above six, in that six, seven, eight, nine, 10 range, those are mid-sized buildings. And those have characteristics that are different than, than a tower. And when we think of towers, we're thinking of, of a building that's slender and much taller. So right now, as the bylaw is drafted, we're treating buildings that are eight or nine stories the same as buildings that are 25 stories in height. And the same rules would apply. So I think we need to sort of step back and look at what's a low-rise building, what's a mid-rise building, and what's a tall building, a real tower? And how do we have regulations that can address that? The tower separation and those, those other regulations around that are a prescriptive approach, and they don't provide flexibility necessarily to address site and neighborhood context. Whereas if we took an approach that had greater flexibility using guidelines, we've got the ability to look at that context, to look at the nature of the building, and to look at the arrangement of buildings on site. And that's really when we're looking at those sort of medium and, and larger sites where we're going to have multiple buildings. I think that's the ones where, where we're going to have some need for some flexibility. Now, as Joel indicated, we certainly come back with applications to address that, but I think one of the, the intentions with a new bylaw is to try and minimize the times we've got to come forward and, and take that effort to, to come back with amendments. As drafted as well, these regulations, tower regulations now apply to both residential buildings and to office buildings or non-residential buildings. And really, these two types of development do have different characteristics, but the bylaw's treating them the same. And so that, in conjunction, again, with this podium and tower definition, I think sets up some, some contradictions and some difficulties with setbacks and footprints and floor plates and so on. So I think that's one thing where we should take a pause, step back, and, and have another look at that. The other general comment on the high-density projects is with regard to underground parking. And the proposed bylaw would have underground parking setback at four to five meters from the street line in, in most of the higher-density zones. And that's the same as the building above the, above grade as well. So notwithstanding the discussion in the staff report about the need to work with utilities and servicing and so on, I don't think there is the need for these large underground setbacks along front yards, and especially on smaller sites or on corner sites where we've got a front yard and a flange yard along the street. They can have a significant impact at that depth or a distance on the parking yield we can get in these projects. And, and we do want to encourage underground parking, of course, in these urbanizing and higher-density areas. So I think that's one thing as well that we need to have a, a review of. So that's kind of the general context. With respect to the Waterloo Innovation Network site that the letter in the package is submitted on, that's the site at the corner of Columbia and Phillips Street. It's a site that's been built over the 1970s and 80s. There will be further intensification there. Once the station area policies get fully implemented, there's the potential for mixed-use development there. And the, the comments that we made in the letter, again, look to the future and to further intensification. The first comment we had was with regard to parking and requests to lower the parking rate, and that has been addressed in the revised submission that Joel has put forward to you. So that's great. Our comments about the towers and the separation and so on, I've, I've just mentioned those, and those certainly apply to this site and indeed to a number of other sites that, that we've had consideration for. The third piece or the third comment is with respect to the concept of active frontage. And the, and again, as a, as a principle, that's something I think that, that everybody agrees with. Creating good street edges, active frontage is part of a great vibrant urban community. The difficulty, though, is that the regulation is really stringent, and it's going to be really difficult to achieve. And it's especially so given the changing nature of the retail and the commercial world as well. There's only so many retailers out there these days building brick and mortar space that will go into mixed-use projects. And there's only so many coffee shops and only so many restaurants. So again, as, as a, as a principle, we have no issue. It's something that can be implemented through a guideline. We've got no issue. But once we start prescribing certain percentages, certain distance between doorways and so on, we're going to have to come back, go through a zoning process or a committee of adjustment, various variance process. So, you know, these are important matters certainly to, to deal with, I think, now, while the bylaw is still being crafted. As I said, we want to avoid having to come back with further applications, again, to deal with these kind of matters. It creates unnecessary effort and then gets back to the issue that was raised by council as well about what do we do in the two-year moratorium, if you will, and once a bylaw gets adopted. So those are my general observations on the, the higher-density development, some specific comments on the wind development. And while I'm here, I just want to comment briefly as well on one of the submissions made by Kristen Beresdale in our office. There's a letter on file with respect to properties at 66 Necker Street and 151 Brighton Street. And we've discussed that with our client as well, and I've advised Joel just briefly before the meeting that we'd like to modify our request and that there's a site-specific provision on the property. It dates back to an older student accommodation study, and I believe an OMB hearing as well. We'd like to modify the request so that in the C69 site-specific provision, we would remove the limitation on the building floor area of one of the dwelling units, which is now set at 85 square meters. And by doing so, that way, the unit size is not restricted, the same as all the neighboring properties are as well. So it's a small request, but an important one to that property owner. So those are the comments I'd like to make. I wanted to keep it brief as I could because I know you've got lots of others to hear from today. And I'd be pleased to take any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Glenn. And yeah, you're, you're right. It's a, it's a bit of a thing. We're also, we're cleaning up 50-plus years of zoning, but we're also trying to forecast the future of... the future of what retail and living accommodations and parking will be. So, point well taken. Specific questions for the delegate? Oh, for staff, okay. Yeah, seeing none. Thank you, Glenn, and I'll turn it over to Councilor Henry for staff to comment.
Joel, on Glenn's last point, I mean, I have a feeling there is a agreeing to disagree on where urban design things are based on comments I've heard from industry and from staff, so I'll leave that be. In terms of site-specific, you know, C-69, I recall having that on my list. Initially, I saw your addendum this morning, which addressed the broader context, and I think broadly satisfied me, but Glenn raised a specific issue. Do you have any quick comments on that, or are those something that you'd be inclined to look at a little bit further? And if so, is that covered in any of your broader conversations around direction that staff will work on some things and subject to your approval?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Councilor Henry. I can get into the specifics as to why, but I have no concerns with removing the 85 square meters for that specific, site-specific bylaw. If council wants me to get into the details as to why I would make that recommendation, I can certainly do that, but there's no issues from a staff perspective.
And since you're on the line here, Joel, maybe talk a bit about what we're doing right now in terms of capturing the information here with Natalie and the team?
Yes, I can, Mayor Jaworski. Natalie's working to capture the comments that are being provided, she's also capturing the directions that are being kind of made to staff from council, so there'll be a consolidated kind of list of directions that should council want to debate each of those items moving forward, that they're more simplified and scoped for council versus having to try and go back and remember all of the submissions and all of the points that were previously brought up by council as directives to staff. So we're trying to consolidate that information and make it easier for you to make decisions moving forward.
Wonderful, thank you, and thanks for advising all the delegates as well. Next up, oh, seeing no further questions? You can actually come up this time, Greg. Greg Romanek, StanTech.
Thank you, Mayor Jaworski, members of council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Greg Romanek, I'm a planner with StanTech Consulting. I'm here today on behalf of two clients' lands, which collectively represent actually four different property groupings, I guess. First is Comfort Plus Furniture Mattresses at 8185 Bridgeport Road East, and then three holdings held by the Schluter Holdings, Inc. Company. They are 35 Weaver Street North at Bridgeport Road, 615-625 Davenport Road, which is at Northfield Drive, and 551 King Street North and 400 Conestoga Road, the north end of King Street. On behalf of my clients, we've appeared here before council and presented at at least two previous informal public meetings, providing verbal input. We've submitted formal comment letters for each of the two previous earlier releases of the draft bylaw for and on each of these four different property groupings. And the process has gone on for several years, and we've been actively involved and we've appreciated those opportunities to participate in the process. From a general point of view, I would like to extend my thanks and recognition of Joel and all the staff on the team who have worked on this beast of a zoning bylaw. It's a massive exercise, and I don't, I personally do not know of another municipality or team who has put together a bylaw of this magnitude in this amount of time. There may be some municipality or some group of planners out there who have done that, but I don't know of that. So I really commend them for their hard work and their openness and diligence to do this well. I also support, my clients support, the overall directions that you're trying to achieve as a city, which is to update, streamline, simplify, and modernize the bylaw. That is definitely in order, and it's a good move forward. And I think it sort of aligns with your work on the official plan as well. So firstly, I'd like to say that we do support the recommended zoning changes and approaches for three of the property groupings that I have represented. First off, Comfort Plus Furniture Mattresses, and two, the Schluter's holdings, the one at 35 Weaver Street at Bridgeport Road, and also for Schluter Holdings at 615 and 625 Davenport Road. There've been some changes that we feel really enhance and will help, I think, you know, facilitate and encourage redevelopment and development of a good nature on those properties. So I'd like to turn my attention then and make a couple of key comment areas about 551 King Street North and the Schluter Holdings there and the stationary mixed-use office, C-4A zone. 551 King Street North, as I'm sure you're aware, is located on King Street North, just across from Conestoga Mall. It's one of the few really vacant undeveloped pieces of land around this area and maybe in the north end of the city. So on behalf of my client, the first matter I'd like to address is that I've been asked by Schluter Holdings, Inc. to request council to actually consider the car dealership use on this property. It's something that we haven't spoken to really in the recent past, however, we note that the Schluter family's been involved in the car auto business in Waterloo and in this region for over 50 years. There are currently several car dealerships existing along King Street North, and it is a bit of a center for that activity. The Schluter family bought the property at 551 King Street North in the late 1990s for purposes of establishing a car dealership there. They subsequently proceeded and applied for and obtained approval of a zoning amendment to allow for a car dealership and a number of other uses in that location. Over the past couple of years, Schluters have been trying and endeavoring to see if they couldn't find a way to expand their existing Hyundai dealership, which is their primary interest in Waterloo today, in its current location at 625 Davenport Road. However, these efforts are unfolding, not unfolding as hoped for. The size, the nature of the current site will not permit the size and type of expansion that they need and that Hyundai Canada are looking for for them to achieve their business objectives for that dealership. The one key objective is to try to obtain the Genesis line, which is a Hyundai product of a higher-end nature. We note in Waterloo today that there's generally a shortage of available and suitably-located corridor commercial lands. Schluters are struggling to find a suitable location for their Hyundai dealership as they'd like to improve and unfold it, and therefore are asking council's consideration to permit a car dealership at 551 King North. So that's item number one. Secondly, I'd like to address some comments directly to the proposed C-4A zoning for 551 King North. First off, I understand and in fact support the principle of activating King Street through this stationary type of zoning. The concern, however, and certainly this concern was more perhaps last week or a week or two before than some of the changes that I think Joel's brought through just over the last day, but it has to do with the extent of the list of permitted uses or actually required uses along active frontages, of which 551 King North is an active frontage. I think the key here is that we're going to need a lot of latitude and flexibility to get, you know, to have a number of choices of uses to establish the active ground floor of a development in this area. And I think up until just recently, the extent, the list of the uses was too narrow, and I think it would have actually impeded or constrained the potential to actually see projects come forward in any context, but certainly in our context here. So I have provided this list of additional active frontage uses, which I believe could and should be considered for the active frontage areas up in our area of the Conestoga Station Area. Some of these, I think Joel has picked up in his recent addendum report, but I'll run through them quickly. Small-scale office, tech office, commercial school, which I don't believe was picked up in the addendum. Office equipment sales and supplies, apparently that'll get picked up under retail store. Pet services is allowed as a personal service shop. So the others would be training facility, alternative education center, cultural facilities, government uses, and institution. And it's my view that all of those uses in their nature and generally as they might be provided would actually bring activity and people to this area of the Conestoga Station Area, planning area, and probably the others as well. So we're just looking to try to extend and expand and realize as many uses as possible to really facilitate development, but still achieve the goals of realizing active frontages along these areas. Joel's already dealt with number two here in his addendum, which is to recognize and allow for ground floor entrances, lobby space, so that's appreciated. I note that we would also like to request for 551 King North and perhaps for this area of the Conestoga Station Area, permission for a different kind of entity, which is an indoor auto sales display room. And I think in Joel's addendum report, he uses the, and he's actually recommended a definition or a use term and a definition for a motor vehicle retail store. And that's a store that's internally located, it brings people into it to look at display vehicles, potentially drive one model or a couple of models out the back, but then they order them, they're not stored on-site, it's not your typical car dealership. So that would be an appreciated additional use for 551 King North. My last comment briefly is about off-site parking. It's been discussed already, so I won't belabor it. Particularly for 551 King Street North, the Schluter Holdings property is adjacent to the Hydro One Power Corridor. They've had discussions about potentially locating some amount of parking on those lands, which would be, I think, a good efficient use and intensified use of land in that area. So we do accept that we're not dealing with off-site parking in the zoning, but we do encourage both staff and council to continue to move in that direction to facilitate off-site parking through other means such as Section 40 of the Planning Act. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Greg. Questions for the delegate? Seeing none at this point? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Henry.
arising from Greg's comments, Joel, just wanted to clarify, the item that you dealt with this morning, I think item 13 in your addendum added, I think, pretty close the definition that Greg was looking for in terms of the more modern view of retail stores, and I see that it is a permitted active, active frontage use under the definition of retail. So I just wanted to see, am I reading that correctly? Is most of what Mr. Romanek was asking for in those matters dealt with in your report this morning?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counselor Henry. With respect to the item around motor vehicle retail center, I think I called it, that would be a component or permitted as part of a retail store, which a retail store is identified as an active frontage. The one comment I would make is that within these station areas, the maximum size of a retail store is 465 square meters, so the use would be permitted. We did cap it within the definition, but through the regulations of the station, it would actually be capped to a lower amount of 465 square meters, so about 5,000 square feet. And again, interestingly enough, that concept of kind of an interior mall auto center to sell some sort of a motor vehicle was raised by a number of different parties over the last week or so, so that was the impetus to add it into this addendum report. But certainly, we don't see an issue with that, you know, having a select number of vehicles as kind of a version of a motor vehicle versus an Apple Store, same type of a thing, right? Few test-drive vehicles outside.
Okay, thank you. Further questions of staff? We'll see if we can do one more. Next up is Yang Liu. I'm not sure if maybe Yang Liu was intending on coming tonight? If not... Carol, how quick can you be?
I have 10 minutes.
Come on up, Carol, we'll be. The Price is Right.
I can't control how long the questions take, but I know I'm limited to 10, and I'll do my best to stay within that timeline. Good evening, or good afternoon, Mayor Jaworski, members of council. I'm here today on behalf of nine separate clients who combined own a total of 60 properties within the city of Waterloo. So these landowners have made significant investments in the city, and it's their desire to continue to remain and redevelop additional properties. Of those 60 properties, we submitted a total of 22 letters, and my apologies, I know that you were getting that package this afternoon. I have hard copies as well, and I think the clerk can hand those out. There's one for Joel. And part of the reason for the delay is I wanted to submit them all in one package, and I was waiting until this morning to get green light clearance from various solicitors before I could submit these letters, so my apologies again that I had to get client authorization. I'm going to summarize my comments that are contained in those letters. First of all, like previous speakers, I want to acknowledge the hard work of staff and particularly Joel Cotter. We've had a number of very fruitful discussions and meetings regarding the final draft, and I think we've been able to reach some resolution on a number of previous issues. And there's really a couple of key areas that we, I want to acknowledge that we do support. One is the transition provisions for projects that are currently proceeding through site plan and comply with the current zone regulations. So this will allow those landowners who have proceeded in good faith and are, have developed projects that are totally compliant to continue to achieve those building permits, so we support that. We also support the transition provisions for applications in process, and this is that zone change application zone that Joel spoke to previously. So we allow that, too. It allows applications that were submitted, have not yet completed their review process to continue on unfettered by this new zoning bylaw, and whatever decision council proceeds, our expectation is that those regulations will get carried into the new bylaw. So again, we support that. We also support the continuation of the reduced street line setbacks within the core, and this is the Uptown Core, and it speaks, I think, to some of the previous questions that council had about maintaining that strong street edge, that main street feel along King Street and along some of those side streets. And there's a, there's a specific map within the bylaw that identifies those properties that will continue to allow for that close building line to the street, so we support that. That was something that wasn't in previous drafts, so we support that. We also support the general reduction in the parking overall, and again, that's in recognition of rapid transit and it's supportive of provincial policies that say we should be encouraging alternative modes of transport close to rapid transit stations, so we support that. And we also support the inclusion of the site-specific provisions that are included as an appendix in the bylaw. So again, that recognizes a lot of the zoning bylaws that have been, gone through this, have been approved by this council, and it recognizes them and maintains them in the legal conforming rather than the legal non-conforming. So those are all the areas of the bylaw that we support. However, there are a few areas, and my comments are very similar to what Mr. Schiel said. We have concerns about the setback for underground parking. As you know, certainly in the Uptown, we have problems with high groundwater, and so at most developments can develop only one level down. So we need to make sure that that underground parking is utilized as efficiently as possible. And so if we have to pull a five-meter setback, you essentially are losing one whole row of parking, which can make or break a project. And if we are in a corner lot, and we have a front lot and a flange lot, you're And if we are in a corner lot, and we have a front lot and a flange lot, we're now talking about two rows of parking that are eliminated, and if you can't put them underground, then you've got to put them above ground. And I think it's everybody's preference from a design perspective to put the parking underground where it's possible. So again, I would ask that, that that specific provision be reconsidered, particularly in the Uptown. And in some cases where there is a zero building line, that provision does carry down for the underground, but it doesn't, it's not consistent, and I think we just need to reconsider that. If we can maximize the amount of underground parking and minimize surface parking and structure parking, I think that's preferable. With regards to the tower regulations, so there are tower regulations that deal with interior side yards, which is 11 meters. I like to think of it imperial, I don't often, but, so we have to have a 36 foot wide interior side yard to a tower. If you have an interior lot, you've got two 36 foot interior side yards. You then have a four meter or 12 foot front yard setback, and then you have another three meter setback to the tower. So we now have 20, 22 or 23 feet from the, from the front lot line. So we have two 36 foot setbacks, we have another 21 foot setback, and then we have the rear. So on a lot of the properties, certainly in the core, that are smaller, by the time you apply those setbacks, you actually don't have a viable building envelope, and that's a major concern. That's just for a single residential tower. When you have a larger parcel, and you're trying to achieve two towers on the same property, you still have all of those same setbacks. You have the side yards, you have the front, you have the podium setback, and then you still have to be 22 meters between towers, so that's 72 feet. So we looked at this, and we applied it to a number of properties that either have recently been approved by this council and previous councillors up and down the core, and we've actually looked at it on applications in process. And not a single one of those projects would comply with those regulations. So I echo what Mr. Shields said. I think we need to have another look at that, and one of the comments I said to Joel is, I said, you know, could we set up some type of a working group? Could we have members of the public? Could we have some architects? Could we have some developers to try and finesse this? Ideally, and I know Counsel Henry won't like it when I say this, but I think because these are designed and they're so custom to the property, I think they should be, they would be more effective if they were in the design guidelines. Or if you're going to have them in the regulation, then I think they need to be modified. I think they're, they're far too restrictive. And really what the result is going to be, is that you're going to end up with a bunch of properties, primarily in the core, that are not going to achieve those levels of intensification that both provincial policy and your own official plan contemplate. So you're not going to be able to achieve that 81 meters, you're not going to be able to achieve the 750 beds per hectare. So that's problematic, because the, the primary purpose of a zoning bylaw is to implement your official plan, and we won't be able to do that. The only way you can do it is you're going to have to assemble large tracts of land, and then even when you are successful, because of those setbacks, you're still not going to be able to achieve the desired height and density that the official plan contemplates. So again, that's, that's really the, the gist of our concerns, is just that the, the regulations, the magnitude of the regulations are very, very restrictive. There are two site specifics that I'd like to speak to as, as part of my remaining three minutes. The first one pertains to 65 University and 239 Weber Street. So that's at the corner of your coming along University, and there's a, there's actually a location map in the package, it's about midway through the middle, and I apologize, the, it's not a paginated document. But it's before you get to the gas station. So it's the University Plaza, there's a Tim Hortons, I think it was Krabby Joe's that's there. So you have that large shopping plaza, and then going around the corner on 239, there's the Wendy's. So this is a consolidated parcel, almost an entire city block, saving except for the gas station, and it has split zoning. On the University, we have a C181, and on the Weber Street, we have, I think, a C540. The intent is, in the future, that this property would be comprehensively master planned and redeveloped, and it's our recommendation that the zoning for 239 align up with the zoning for University. So we're saying both properties should be zoned C181 to allow and facilitate for a master planned campus on those two parcels. The other site specific request, and it deals with a number of properties, and again, Mr. Shields spoke to this, about the tower separations in employment areas. So within designated and zoned employment lands, you can't have residential uses, so you can only have employment. You're going to have office and tech, some light manufacturing R and D. So the tower separations, I, I don't think it's, it's the same context to have two office buildings separated by 22 meters. You don't have the same concerns with privacy and overlook that you may have with two residential towers. And more importantly, it's going to significantly undermine the, the intent of trying to redevelop the city's supply of employment lands to the fullest extent as possible. So you're going to end up with inefficient utilization of, of these employment lands. And again, I don't think the intent of the tower regulations is in the same manner as they would be in residential or close to residential neighborhoods. So when we're talking about large business park areas, I don't think that the tower regulations, having this 11 meter setback, interior side yard setback, and having the tower separations is necessary, and I think it will actually undermine the ability for these properties to be fully utilized. So again, that, those are the site specifics. So in conclusion, we have concerns about the magnitude of the regulations, both the introduction of street line setbacks generally along major corridors to the tune of five meters. And again, you know, contemporary thinking has been to try and bring those buildings closer to the street edge, activate them, have more interaction. If the buildings are being set back five meters, you don't have that same relationship that you would have if the buildings are closer. So I think that's something that needs to be reconsidered before the final bylaws passed. And again, fundamentally, our concern is that without some relaxation on the regulations or incorporating some of these in the design guidelines, the bylaw as drafted is not going to achieve the intent and policies within the provincial policy statement, it's not going to achieve the policies within your own official plan, and that, that is problematic. So that's my comments, and I think I came in 17 seconds overtime.
Wonderful, Carol. Good job. Questions from Counsel Whaley?
So Carol, I'm going to leave this specific stuff to Joel and his team, but I want to talk to you generally a little bit about your comments, about the fact that the buildings in the core are likely to be smaller. And what does that mean for affordability?
Well, I don't have to tell you that the price of land in the core, we've seen tremendous increases in the value of land, and a lot of that is triggered by expectations that are established in the official plan. So land is valued based on what people think that they can achieve, and if they think they can achieve a 20 story building, or 81, or 60 meters, you know, that's how the land is valued. So if you can't, if you can only achieve a six story building, yet your land value is based on a much higher density, it's going to make it even more difficult to bring additional residential units to market and anywhere close to affordability. So, and, and a side note, it's not really related to zoning, but just because of the intensity and the amount of development in the core, what, what I'm hearing from our clients is that the cost of construction, the cost of labor, the cost of materials is also increasing at such a pace that the combination of that rising land values, it's making it more and more difficult. So we have an area in the core where the highest intensification is to occur, and I think it, we should be doing our, our best to ensure that that happens. Again, it talks about the certainty that this is where we've identified where intensification is, is going to happen, and we need to ensure that we can achieve those policies.
So you, you and I both know Waterloo is a very lucky place in the world. Plenty of opportunity, burgeoning universities, tech, tech center for Canada and one of the biggest in North America, opportunity everywhere. People want to come here. And if we, if we decide to cap the growth in the core, they're still going to come. They still want to be here. Where, where's that growth? And we know that there's no land left in the, in the, in the greenfields. Where, where are we going to, where, where are they going to go?
Well, you're absolutely right. Through you, Mr. Mayor, Waterloo does not have any more greenfield land. I mean, you've, you're, you're building to the limits, and if you, if you are not able to achieve those intensifications within your core or within your major nodes, it's going to drive up the existing supply of housing for sure. And to some extent, I think it will, people, some of that development will, will go to your neighbor down the street, and we're already seeing some of that. There's a lot of redevelopment happening in Kitchener, and I think you're going to see, if you could develop mid-rise along your major corridors, I think everybody loves that scale of mid-rise, but again, it goes to the, to the feasibility and the cost of, of achieving of building seven and eight story buildings, it's very, very difficult to do, and it's very, very difficult to do when you have very, very high land value. So it's all the economies of scale, which are also not working in, in helping affordability, right?
Further questions of the delegate? Counsel Maven?
Through you, Mayor Jaworski. So if we lease some of our city land in the Uptown and have builders build on it, that could facilitate affordable housing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The city actually has an endable situation in that you have large parcels of land within the core that are currently being used for surface parking, and I think we can all agree that that's probably not the most efficient use of that land, and, and some of the recent design charrettes that took place as part of that Uptown strategy talked to that, is how can the city leverage that land resource most effectively? And because you own the land, you can, you know, you can say how those lands are, are to be used, just as if you did, just like you did in, in the disposition of the art property. You had control over how the, how that land could be redeveloped. So I think that's, that's certainly a wonderful opportunity that the city has at their disposal.
Good. I think it can happen too. Carol, setting aside the, the, what's it, 65 University Avenue, and assuming there's going to be a zone change application come through to get those synced up, if you were sitting in our shoes right now, and you use the phrase, maybe the, you assume that maybe the bylaw shouldn't pass as it is in this form, what would you do in our, in our shoes? You talked about a committee?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Another fair question?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to be quarterback from this end, but I, I think, and I've said in all of the, the letters that I've submitted, we support and we understand the principle of having appropriate tower separations and having appropriate setbacks. I think it's the magnitude of those regulations as they're presented today that are, are severe and very prescriptive, and will prevent a significant amount of redevelopment from happening in those very areas where your official plan says it, says it is going to happen. And again, we have this two-year moratorium that we have to contend with, and, and I appreciate Mr. Cotter's comments that, you know, staff will be reasonable, and I expect that this council and the next council will also be, but it, it creates uncertainty, and uncertainty create, is, is something that people that are making investments in, in any municipality don't like. So the more certainty is, is always better. So I think we need to take a, take a closer look at some of those regulations. And again, echoing what, what Mr. Shields said, it's a one size fits all. So if you have a seven story building, you still are constrained by those 11 meter side yard setbacks, and you still have that three meter step back. And if you, you know, if you have a eight story office building, those two office buildings still have to be 22 meters apart. So I think there needs to be more of a sliding scale for, is one example, but I think the way they're written right now, they're very, very onerous, and they will prevent development from occurring. I mean, we, we, we tested it against a number of properties, and we know that we, we couldn't, you can't develop quite a number of properties, even larger properties, we can't physically get two towers on those sites that are almost a city block. So again, that tells me that we need, they need some modification.
Okay, thank you.
And I think that's it. Thank you, Carol, for your time.
Thank you.
And to Counsel Henry, please.
So quickly to, to Joel, having quickly gone through that package, I see at least two site specifics that identify current uses needing to continue that aren't yet addressed. I imagine those are things staff will be reviewing in the package anyways, as you've covered this morning. I just wanted to confirm on the University Avenue Weber parcel, my understanding from my quick review of the official plan schedules in this, that the request to add height on the Weber Street side to level it off would require an official plan amendment, since it's both corridor commercial and limited to medium high rather than to, to high density. And so that's not something we could entertain.
Through you, Mayor Jaworski, to Counsel Henry. I too was also kind of quickly looking at the properties on University Avenue and Weber, and I concur with that assessment. The official plans differ with respect to those two properties, so aligning them would require an amendment to the official plan. The split zoning and, and proper, split zoning regulations in the bylaw would allow the properties to be jointly developed together, but within the respective official plan and zoning, implementing zoning bylaws for each of the particular properties. But you could have common drive aisles and those types of things consolidated. But if the intent is to merge them into one zone category with the equivalent height requirement, that would require an official plan amendment.
Okay, seeing nothing further, I think we'll recess till 6:30 or so. 6:30 will. Excellent. Thank you all.